The April 5th meeting, the common council order. Guys from the executive agents.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Alvin, good to you.
Gayle Connor, Mayor.
Laura.
Yes.
Mike Byer.
The Secretary of State.
Colleen Nelson, Mayor.
We move next to reading of minutes from March 1st. The regular meeting is out of here for approval. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to this set of notes?
I'm reading to add Amanda Salter's last name as the employee first officer. Is anyone in line?
We can do that. Poor Amanda. Thank you. Is there much to per- field description?
What about coming through the front? A choice.
Yep. You did that.
I thought I did.
All those on fingers signify what I'm saying on. Aye.
Aye.
Close? There it is. Next up are committee reports. The fire territory board and it is the executive board met on March 24th. The agenda called for action on a resolution to confirm the 2013-7 resolution establishing the fire protection territory equipment fund and charges for service runs. And we were, I think, set to review that, but right before the meeting, Alyssa Darwin found a fully executed copy of the resolution in her files and that indicated the necessity of reaffirming the resolution. Dan Doolan talked a little bit about the mortgage and was set to have a discussion, I think, with Dan Hinden at the airport today. Really was no other further action taken. Thank you, Mr. Eric Flynn.
Um, we didn't have a March meeting, but I did get something today about the permits. We had five new written permits in March and 12 new to date, so, okay. And then we have four or five permits from March. It doesn't have anything on the agenda to happen yet for March.
Did the North Coast solid points district need, or are there any other more districts that need?
I, well, I, I go to the airport meets on Thursday, but I met with Ed Nagel and he shared that their major project right now is a new pool park that's going to run about a half million dollars and they're kind of obviously funding that upfront and then it will be paid back. From the FAA grants similar to what has been going on with the airport expansion. And this year is the last year for the runway expansion project to be reversed in the city. And we also need a new member because Adam Fosse moved to Georgia and I contacted Adam and he is wanting to use somebody in his lower portion of the nation. And so if you're aware of anybody that would be interested, then what can I?
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Can you explain a conference? Residential conference like people?
Can you do a committee of time, like, could you do a build or add one or any group that's animal?
Oh, that is.
Yeah.
Like after changing footprints of your patio, there is that book instead of going up there again.
The council has been presented with written reports from department heads, so without objection, the department head reports are incorporated by reference into the minutes. So I've asked Jake Adams, who is the new executive director for the Kirk County Economic Development Corporation, to speak to the council tonight and go over the strategic plan and activities in every way and what is there a lot, so.
We've been very, thank you, Mayor. We've been really, really busy. My name is Jake Adams. I'm the executive director for the Kirk County Economic Development Corporation. And for your, obviously, mostly you know, but just so that you're aware, you're a large contributor to our corporation. We are a private nonprofit corporation that does economic development services on behalf of the city of Delphi. So a lot of the moving that I'm doing, working with the mayor, obviously, we do work with you guys a lot, is all from the services that you pay for. So obviously, we, we work for the county and the other towns and municipalities as well. We all like to hold it all in the same direction. So just, just so you're aware, what I'd like you to do real quick, I put in your packet our 2021 strategic plan. And so for a few minutes, I would like to go over page five. It's all really good information. Your, the board has set me up for success for 2021, but I really, today, just put a few minutes by and have you talk focus on page five. So some of the main things our organization has really been focused on for 2021 are those, are obviously all of this, is we look at economic development and if you're thinking about it in your head, like, we have our own little piece of what economic development is. I found, as I've traveled and worked in this field, that I can ask 20 different people, get 20 different answers, and they're all right. So really, what we try to do as an organization is put all of our priorities into the circle and then as, as the makeup of the board, the appointments, we decide what are those areas of emphasis. And so coming aboard in January, the three main areas, the three main areas where we really are focused on is community collaboration, broadband expansion, and housing. So if you think about what that means to your community and your constituents, obviously, all of this is important, right? And I'm doing probably all this at some point or another, but our main focus are those three areas. And so on our part for the Economic Development Corporation, the housing piece is, is everybody's in the game. So as the city of Delphi, you probably hear it as well, there's a lot of communities engaged in residential development. So how do we as an organization be strategic and who we're trying to court as developers? Who, what kind of builders do we want? What kind of homes would we like to see in our community? And what fits our social economics? So we have to be practical about, right? We have to understand that we have a diverse workforce and one in five people in our county work at Indiana Packers. So what is their income marginalized to what kind of housing can we really afford? But then we also have a university that's 15 minutes down the road that needs adequate housing for professors and professional educators. So we, as we look at that, I do want to seek your input. You do have appointments to the EDC board, but at any time, and that's why I'm here tonight to kind of open that bridge of communication, at any time, you have a question or a concern or a comment or you hear a rumor or have good advice, even bad advice, we take it all. Because we are, our goal is to be the think tanks for your economic development principles so that we can begin to vet those out and see how they work. So Spencer can come to me and say, "Have this idea, how does this work?" And we can go research that information, figure out what communities are doing that work, and then we can kind of bounce around to affect this and how it's going to play out, so. Housing broadband expansion, right now, we're really, our organization has been focused a lot in for, for the broadband, but what has, what that's done for the city of Delphi is in fact that it's opened up relationship and dialogue with internet service providers. And so that'd be the key, right? Who are those providers and how do we bring them to the community? So we're probably, we're going to DO in for, but we're hopeful that those conversations are laid into the city of Delphi. Obviously, due to being a utility provider, they pull a lot of leverage when it comes to your railways and to a degree where they kill the broadband development goals. So that, those are things that we're doing, we're constantly having those conversations in the broadband space. And I'll turn up the questions because I want to give some dialogue with the legislature here on a little bit of this stuff. And the third of this, really, what we're focused on for this year is community collaboration. We want to be involved, we want to be engaged, that's, that's, that's the important part. What I do is to be present. So as, as I can't guarantee that I'll make it to every council meeting, I got stuff going for right now, we have representatives there or going on right now, actually, so. But our goal is to be as active as possible, having our appointees report back, having our, our team report back to you guys on what's going on. So the community collaboration piece for me is really just you guys providing input and ideas on how we can be better collaborators. Hey, I heard this, can we try this as the Economic Development Corporation tries something like this? I don't know, let's see how it works. So that, that is the community collaboration piece and the leadership piece. Because we, we, we like to think that you focus on Delphi and I'm able to go out and bring resources and ideas and talent back to the community so we can begin to make, make our community all better. So that's kind of the three areas. Are there any questions, comments, as many?
In January 2020, when we were seated, former mayor Aaron, or Evan, shared with us that there was a, he was working with some of the other leaders of towns around the county to put together a countywide, like, kind of a collaboration group of people to meet. Do you know if that is still in operation and is still meeting or?
No, and I did participate in that. So I was, I was on the Florida County Council for two years, which certainly lends itself to understanding municipal workings and, and so that did, that, they haven't met, I think we met a few times, schedule conflicts, but yeah, I have not, that is a tremendous idea and I, if we could somehow get it to work, having all units of government in one room to some degree is going to be, I mean, Florida just went through this water project, Delphi did too, Florida's going through a sewer project. How can we capitalize on our expertise and knowledge of what these communities are working on? So I, I think it's a tremendous idea and I would love to get that together.
Could you share a little bit about the residential tip that is, you know, the big topic right now and the meeting that's coming up for May?
So May 5th at 6:00 PM at the Delphi United Methodist District, we'll be broadcasting that openly here this week, we'll push that out to, to the public and all area folks. That's going to be discussing exactly what the residential tip is and how communities use residential tips to leverage the housing service, basically. Our goal really is to look at the residential tip, and I'm not saying this is coming, so I don't want you guys up to vote on this stuff, right? So the goal is to give you as much information and resources so that you can fully understand what these tools are that economic development professionals use. So you say, how did they get housing? And I, my job is to hopefully present you with all the tools that they use to get those housing startups going. It doesn't mean they're always the right thing to do. I think residential tip is, that's just my professional opinion, but we need to make sure that everybody understands what that really means to a community and how, and how it works. And so May 5th would be the opportunity to really, and that's not the only time you can engage us or our organization on that topic, but our goal is to make sure that the public as well understands what, what, what a residential tip is and how, how we plan to use it for Delphi, the county, Florida, growing Cameron, how we use that to be able to leverage our resources as developers. Because that's frankly what, what the developers are telling us they need, they need us to de-risk projects for them. And this is a tool to be able to de-risk some of their, some of their customers, so.
Are you in communication with school administration about how the residential tip impacts school corporations financially?
Yes, that, the answer is yes. So we have spoken to Carroll schools and I've spoken to, as a board, in a public meeting as well as individually, and I've spoken with a few of the Delphi county school board members, but yeah, I, yes. So we, and we even want to do, we're always going to have folks to talk to and these meetings like tonight are good examples of saying, "Have you talked to so-and-so?" Because we, that's where we're going. And so our goal isn't to, I mean, we're gonna, we may, our goal isn't to miss anyone, but if we do, then May 5th is a time for them to come to their, come to the meeting and say, "Hey, what is this all about?" So yes, that's, that's great. So the schools are, they have to vote on that, obviously, if a residential tip becomes an allocated area under the school board, yes, as well as your, as well as this body as well, so. Yes, great, great questions.
Will there be any builders in that meeting?
Probably not there. They, I'm going to be honest, they like to keep themselves in the shadows a little bit. It's a competitive space. So they're, they, they won't be there in an openly, openly fashion, in an openly fashion. But we have specifically, I've spoken to probably six different builders. I like to talk to home builders directly, not developers, because there's a inherent difference between those guys and in today's market, it's really about the builders, it's not about the developers anymore. And, and so all of them have given us their feedback on their ideas of what's going to work in the market, because like I told you in the, in the opening there, I mean, what we want and what the market will hold is inherently, could be different. And so we need to be aware and okay and understand what is the market bearing and is that the type of housing that fits our community? So good question, I think we'll invite them, but they're not going to be there in a facet of, "I'm so-and-so home builders wanting to build in Carroll County." So I found really quickly, the market is so tight right now for, to get to a place that they want to try to keep themselves as, but they are rolling builders, the builders from the area, we've talked to national builders as well. So I think that we try to, to build a portfolio of, of home builders that, that fit all socioeconomic, so everybody has an opportunity to buy a home when we have that opportunity, when we have the chance to build them. Can I answer your question?
I briefly, you said, you know, that they have given you that, not like this global world market, I mean, is there any way for you to say what, how is either price rate or?
Yeah, there is. I, I think that multifamily is really, really enticing right now. And so what we're really trying to do is figure out how we parcel our single-family developments with our multifamily. So you're typically, you're probably going to see a development that is going to be 20 acres and it's going to be multifamily, single-family, to any scale. So that's from a national builder or a regional home builder, that's what they're going to focus on, because they need a cash flow and then they can sell the market, they can sell the individual homes at a different pace than they could the multifamilies. So that's the, that's the, that's the model right now. Somebody who can build a development, they can build, sell them one-on-one, is looking for the cash flows for the project. So that's kind of what we've heard is like, "Hey, we'd love to do this, Jake, we really like a multifamily, how do we get that?" So that's, that's kind of what we're working on. So I would anticipate that you're going to see a little bit of a swell in multifamily plus permits. So be aware of those, they are great for the community, they're great, I mean, they're needed. So just make sure that obviously the, the May 5 model and the product itself is good for the community. So I'm hoping that you see those and when you do, they're going to be nice and needed and welcomed by, by the community in the future, so. Did I answer?
Yeah, that's perfect.
What's your timeframe?
Yeah, we always joke, you know, we're not going to sink shade under a tree we're planting tomorrow, right? So our goal really is to just plant the seeds on, on residents' development over 2021. So we, if we can get the tools put into place, like residential tip, and then work on individual properties and identifying what is for sale, I think that'll be what this year will be about, is arranging those relationships and deals. And then my goal will be 2022, to keep Cameron really busy with new good permits, because we've put the deals together, we've got the infrastructure in place, things like that. So to answer your question, 24, 36 months, I think, is, is the role we have in it. We'd love to have it tomorrow, right? But yeah, so does that, say, answer your question?
So then business development, expansion, that's probably three to five years on, or longer?
So shifting gears to industry, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
You know, we have, we have a whole, a whole scope of industrial projects right now. I have some that could drop tomorrow in funding and I've got some that are just on the infancy stages that need infrastructure to support any investment. So I've kind of, that stuff is, is so varied, so, yeah, I mean, we, I wouldn't be opposed to, to, to wait and, I don't, so, I don't want to, I don't want to get hopes up or believe that, in our world of economic development, we're always dealing with industrial and commercial projects all the time. Some fade away, some say they're going to, and they're handshake away from you to die. So those, hopefully, over this year, we have, you know, we lost it, QC Supply has made significant investments in Delphi over there, talked to their general manager a while back and got to tour the places, they're building it out. They're also adding robots at the manufacturing facility here. So those are assets, those are real property assets that are going to be taxed and, and supported with the tax base, so those are the wins that maybe aren't as appealing, but are getting done right now.
Jake, could you touch very briefly on the fuel opportunities zone and what that means in terms of the delta?
So opportunities, and you guys are going to hear a lot about it, and my, and what I did, what I had to do was just, just sit down on a chair and say, "I don't have a clue what this means, tell me." And then, and they did, I got a little bit further and then I said, "Not for males, tell me," and they got up the floor, a floor group. Opportunities zones are, it was a federal initiative, 2017, federal government, I believe it was the Tax Act that incorporated the, the opportunity zones from the federal level. Governor Holcomb was given the task of designating these opportunity zones and then he set out some parameters within like income level, socioeconomic, to be able to hit that. Delphi is one of the only ones really in this region, in west central, the Purdue region, our closest one, I believe, world-wise, is Peru. Lafayette has a few, West Lafayette has a few, which, don't ask me how that happens, but. So there are a few around here, but ours is the only one that has substantial investment potential. So what I mean is like, it's land, real open land available. Some of those other communities, especially the metros, don't have that. Maybe opportunity zone that's got already buildings on it and already mostly developed. So what an opportunity allows someone to do is take a 1031 that they received from the IRS, so an asset that they have, um, this is, I'm weaving this, so it's an asset that they have sold. They are required with that 1031 to exchange it for another asset within a time period. And you probably know those time periods, I'm still, I'm getting there.
Usually six months.
Okay, so you've got 180 days, right? Essentially?
Yep, exactly.
To get, get that done. What the opportunity allows it does is we as a community, we tell them, "If you have a 1031, you can put it into an investment fund into our community." And that money would come into Delphi as capital for projects. And in return, those investors will not have to pay capital gains on that 1031 if they hold on to the asset for 10 years in our community. So Jake had a million dollars and I grew that, and I put it into the city of Delphi, which is going to happen, we've already had these conversations, by the way, this is, we've already taken calls of, of great investments in our community that are, this is going to be the tipping point for. But if they have a million dollars and they buy an asset or they create an asset and they hold on to that, whatever money they make, and say they cash out after 10 years of 10 million dollars, then the $9 million that they grew is deferred capital gains and they get taxed. The million dollars, the original principal, they have to pay 8% of that debt, debt obligation. So it is a great, it's a great tax, well, I was trying to give you the most bare and essential idea of what it is. There's a lot more nuances in that, but, but on a, on a wave top level, that's exactly what it's going to do. And our goal is to work with you and make sure we drive as much investment. So we have seven years to really get this done. So if there's an asset in the community that needs invested into or you feel that, that it could be a priority, we want to work with you on identifying investors where you can get that capital gains in there and defer those folks that, that tax that they would be having. So, did that?
Thank you. And Delphi was sort of, is one of six communities to participate in the rural opportunity initiative that is with Purdue, Senator Regional Development, the Office of Community and Affairs. We have our kickoff meeting, Jay, Julia, Josh, Clay, and I are on the score team and we'll have our kickoff meeting with Purdue next week, I believe, and, and, you know, we've developed an advisory board to, to work with us on the development perspectives over the next few months that will, will handle our assets and drive a plan for attracting investors.
And we have some really great partners, because Purdue Center Region Developments and they were the same Office of Community and Affairs, Indiana Housing Development, they're involved as well, so there's a lot of folks that are really much more professionals that are individuals than we are. They're going to provide technical assistance to us, help us guide, so we're not the first community to go through this. It's not as amateur as maybe stellar was back in the day, totally different model, but totally different thing, but what I'm saying is we have communities that have proven models of success, we're going to try to use, use their information. Anyway, last minute question for me. My card is in there, a text, a phone call, an email, I don't ever have to take it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
Continuing on, just a reminder that we do have a short term tomorrow. I hope that three of you are available, if you are still available for tomorrow night. Spencer is not, Mike is not, Cody?
Should be good.
Great, okay. So we will have this.
Calm down.
Public hearing on additional appropriations and on the resolutions, it should be a careful matter. And then we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is proposed, proposed ordinance, 2021-3, ordering four-way stop traffic control devices. This ordinance would create four-way stops at the intersections of Market and Monroe Streets, Washington Monroe Streets, and Union and Main Streets. In order to proceed to discussion, is there a motion to pass proposed ordinance 2021-3, like the title alone, ordering four-way stop traffic control devices on Thursday?
I would wish for that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I think it's a great idea. That's my suggestion. I think those are all areas that are rather scary and actually just driving near, like through two of them are what I'm, so I just, I know it's actually a far off, a lot of things, so it's just, it's more than simply happening. It's right outside, and it's still around downtown, like, in public, relatively striking in downtown areas, I don't think it's going to go back there. So I have a question about the main meeting, because that is a very congested, congested area. How would the sign be on that? Are we talking like a stop sign or are we flashing signs or overhead signal? How would we make that visible, because the parking lot's there?
I think you would have to determine, you know, best way to make it visible, there are existing poles there, so, you know, in the bump outs, so you could get the physical signs in place. I think you have expressed concern about, you know, maybe the, like a flashing red light. Again, there are light poles there, so if it looks like it would be feasible to string a light that will be in the center of the intersection, it has to be high enough so that, obviously, firefighters and that sort, you know, are easy to access, I mean. Can you look at, you know, perhaps, we can talk with the planning department that gives us any of the areas that advises us for the, you know, traffic advisory meeting and see what the, and also just the end up specifications to see what would be feasible to make that more visible. You know, you can have, like, a warning flasher over there, especially when you first establish these, they'll move to be warning lights to let you know that, you know, that this changed. The other thing that can be done are the tripplastic lines to designate blocking areas and if those are at each of these, you know, intersections and then also let you know that your, your area is, one, subject to pedestrian traffic, that two, that you're going to have to stop on. But here at Monroe and Washington now are the one traffic, the area that's marked for pedestrians. A lot of cars stop there because they assume that's a police stop, any stop. Certainly a plan, you know, you can ask Aaron to, if such a, come to the next meeting.
I'm not making certain, a little visibility, especially after, you know, with the parking, especially if you have a large trucks that are working in there, making that visible, especially when it first gets implemented, a lot of people are not going to recognize that it's a stop sign, right? Just out of course, they're not, they're not going to see it, you're directed, they're good. And then making sure that we don't backflip. And then making sure that we don't backflow traffic into, you know, Washington and going out here, basically, so we're like, make sure that way we don't want to backflow traffic out into it as well. And then my next concern is being backed out of the spots there and, so, I mean, it's a, it's a highly congested area, and especially every time, make sure that A is visible, and then B, I don't wanna make sure, I don't wanna have our traffic back up paying cost condition anything as well.
Yeah, almost the same situation in, you know, the block of Washington between Main and Franklin where you've got the traffic light and then a four-way stop and, and the parking on both.
I think visibility there, that is a little bit better than front of the businesses on Main Street.
Well, you've got all the traffic difference at the corner, so, you know, the businesses along the, the side of the street. So there's, it's, it's also pretty heavily congested. I'm not saying that it's not difficult sometimes to pull out the stall and get into, you know, traffic. You know, if there are a lot of people turning right, you may not see them coming until they're just about on, but, you know, the, the, they at least are, they may have a slower speed than they are now. You know, it's, all of these, these are probably the three intersections with the worst sight lines in, in Delphi. I'm sure there are others, but these are heavily traveled, and so it, we're, it is, you know, waiting for accidents to happen. And we've had a number of their close calls. I don't know that we've recorded any accidents this past year in these intersections. But the visibility issues have been talked about for years, these things.
I contacted Chief Doolan, I have not heard back from him because the last time, especially the one that made in Union came before the previous council, Daryl Sterick, the former Fire Chief spoke, and he expressed a lot of concern about backup traffic coming in from the east, potentially blocking the exit of fire trucks out of the station. So he was definitely against that at the time, just sharing. And so I haven't heard anything from Dan yet as to whether he feels equally or differently. And another concern was that between the stoplight and Union Street for people going east, when that traffic is stopped and built up back along where like the pub and the sandwich shop and the stonehouse are, there was a concern about stop traffic and people walking between stopped vehicles and walking right out into a moving lane of traffic. Because it's that now, with people doing that and their children are just kinda there. And so there was a concern expressed about that, if that became a four-way stop and somebody getting hit back.
I think it's different, you know, the traffic is different.
Well, if the, if there's a four-way stop at, at Main and Union heading east, the traffic could potentially back up if there's a lot of traffic and, and that was a concern that was expressed because people just walk across the street here now. And, you know, somebody's walking out between a couple of stopped vehicles.
I think that's why we have a pedestrian mark.
Oh, I see.
People don't look, I think it's quite a, I do it all the time too now.
So it does, my thing, there's, like, it does seem like, when I saw that, it seemed like it caused a lot of congestion. If you go to nap, you gotta stop sign here, stop light here, then you're stuck because you got people stopping here, you got light cars here. It is, because yes, going north and south, that's not the highway from this way to that. So it's, it's not as bad, but you got the highway going through down there, you gotta stop, sign on the stop light. This is like sort of a lot more congestion downtown.
But I mean, I think we could argue that, but at the same time, I think.
I know it's not.
Stop sign there is gonna stop people down there. If you're not, you're not going, you're not gonna keep going, you're not going to get your first five mile per hour. That's right. I, I see a lot of people go quite in touch, because it does make for five, three, and it's twenty-five. My, my concern is making sure it's visible because people are gonna stop sign on there. It's gonna, I mean, we're, we're gonna, I guarantee we're gonna have crashes there, but they, you can, you know, I've seen communities with like, you know, stop sign where it says stop on the ground, very large, it's pretty hard to miss that, I think. Or being people into it, but.
Well, I think it's congestion, you're not gonna see it anyway.
I mean, it's a good idea, I want a stop sign there, but how will we go about making sure it's visible enough for people to actually stop? Because my concern is people that drive in every day, they're gonna, they're gonna want that stop sign. And then we'll have a couple crashes there, I can almost guarantee it, just from people, you know, the standard way they drive. Just from my experience in seeing.
I wanted to ask you about this intersection here, because now with increased industry out here, the semi-traffic has really picked up on Washington Street, especially coming down off of the South Hill. And would there be a possibility if you do make that a four-way stop to potentially put in a truck route? So they have to go out and around it?
We're, we're being on that. That has to go through the Kipon area, the plan looking.
Yeah.
And so with the new Highway Engineer now appointed for the county, in Chumacher, I've already talked about this, and we're hoping to get an immediate setup now that he is onboard. I know he's in, they are working with us to try to get that done. But it, that'll take a while. So in the meantime, we're hoping that, number one, that semi-traffic is part of what is creating a unsafe conditions with the sight lines is, you know, instead of getting hit by a small car, you can get hit by a large semi-traffic because you, you literally cannot see it till you're out of an intersection. And so perhaps having the stop, you know, at that short of an interval will encourage some of them to take the route around. But the goal ultimately will be to establish the traffic.
For part of the visibility to, to utilize a, a support of its own, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
To help with the.
Portable ones, yes, yeah, that would help quite a bit, I think. And as we're instituting, you know, we approve the four-way stops, yes, something like that to increase visibility as people get used to just seeing the four-way stops would be an important, important way to go.
After you complete the stoplight heading east, where would you put a stop sign, or stop sign that would, you could actually see?
Well, there are a lot of those, so.
Yeah, every time I try to go across there, there's a huge pickup truck right there. I mean, once in a day, there's always a huge pickup truck.
And that's why I think Spencer's thought about a, you know, flag light in, in the intersection.
Still have a good stop sign there, but also having a, a flashing light.
Yeah, I think we have to have it, there's always a traffic there.
Isn't there code two that doesn't allow parking spaces within twenty feet of an intersection? Or do you know?
Um.
There used to be, and then the other code that prohibited parking spaces within twenty feet of an intersection.
Was that within the state, was that within the state highway though, or normal?
Yeah, it depends on which receives, what, you know, what we can, we'll look, we can certainly look at that and see.
I'm sure if it's something the council's in favor of, between Erin, Mr. Pugh, and Dodd, they can figure out something that would satisfy everyone, they're very excited. And they might have even clever suggestions as to how to phase it in, for a period of time, putting, you know, cones up or extra items to draw attention to the change until maybe a month or so goes by or whatever they suggest to. Others, that are driving.
And they, and we'll just autopilot through that.
Yeah. When they had a temporary stoplight out in Armory Road in, in thirty-nine, I could see it if it watched in my yard, watch them just blow through that. And I mean, that was pretty visible.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there any further discussion? So, remember to vote on the first reading, so that we can make changes to.
That we pass the word on first reading?
So, all those in favor of passing proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three, first reading, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
The votes? So the motion carries. Next on the agenda is proposed resolution twenty twenty-one dash five. It's a resolution regarding monthly fees charged to wastewater five months for meter reading and maintenance. This resolution would replace resolution nineteen ninety-eight dash three, which set the fee of the charge at one dollar per meter. There has been no increase in the per meter fee since nineteen ninety-eight. And also, since the number of meters varies from month to month, this proposed resolution would establish the charge to wastewater as a flat fee of fifteen hundred dollars per month. And then, of course, it would be reviewed from time to time in the future, should, should the number of meters, you know, gas to play in increase, or just as a solution.
So the Southern City, where you pay two, we pay a dollar per meter?
We pay a dollar per meter at present time, so.
How much would we pay them off that now, with a dollar per meter?
Right now, we're just under twelve hundred meters. And I don't think it's changed much. I don't know how much it's changed since nineteen ninety-eight, but I doubt that the number has increased or decreased very much over that period. So is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash five?
I'll leave the motion.
Motion for Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
So that's from somebody. Discussion.
So no change from ninety-eight for a dollar, basically? I think five dollars fifty, fifty, and I don't think I have any other thoughts.
Basically, the law that laws everywhere.
How's that on the question?
Yeah, the discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion carries. Finally, under new business, I would like for the council to consider providing an incentive to encourage city of Delphi employees to become vaccinated until the nineteen. Many of our employees have already become vaccinated and many are not planning to receive the vaccination for various reasons. And the city, you know, and cannot mandate that they receive vaccinations. But we would certainly benefit if as many employees as possible became vaccinated, would minimize, would certainly protect each other, and also minimize the risk of hospitalization or serious illness for those who are vaccinated. In checking with the Association of Indian Municipalities, several communities are offering incentives like additions to the health savings account or gift cards to employees to encourage them to receive vaccinations. Neither of these two options would be added to income, so it's, it's not increasing taxable income for employees. We had a department head meeting this morning and following discussion of this issue, the department head spoke it might be appropriate to offer employees their choice of a hundred dollars as a gift card or a hundred dollars added to the health savings account when they present their certificate of vaccination. At the twenty twenty-one budget, the council approved five thousand dollars towards a wellness program that would provide gym membership to full-time employees. So far, eight of the full-time employees have benefited advantage of them. That benefit of, of costing them fifty dollars for employees, so that's five thousand dollars. So if the wellness line item were used for such a program, such a vaccination incentive, if you have twenty-four, I think, employees, so the maximum amount if everyone got vaccinated would be twenty-four hundred dollars. So it's still, you know, within, we've got budget on that. Is this something that the council would like to consider?
Do you know how many employees have not been vaccinated?
We do not, because we, we've done that, obviously, there are many who have not been age-wise able to schedule a vaccination, but the, the, Adrian's now scheduled to include everyone from, you know, sixteen and not like, I'm talking about everyone, you know, everyone that's elderly or recently. We're just hearing that another employee has had no intention of getting one. And for some, that will remain their decision. But for, if we could encourage by such a, a program, this, some to receive the vaccination, you know, that certainly puts that much further than that to, I'm feeling that we're safe and ready to get rid of these things. So. And also to hopefully, if everybody, you know, who isn't vaccinated, you know, it doesn't hurry this up together, but there's much, much less chance of it getting COVID. And there are much worse chance that it would be contributing to the, the variants that pop up because of, you know, not everyone is vaccinated, so those are all things that come with COVID. But it's a question of whether the council would be interested in this one.
Do we have an incentive for people to vaccinate? Do we have an incentive to have, for people to vaccinate?
We do not, nor do we have an incentive for wearing a seatbelt or, you know, anything of that sort. I don't know if there was ever an incentive at the city of Delphi for a smoking cessation program, but, you know, other communities have offered that. The, the, the chance of, of losing your, from, from COVID is, you know, has, you know, certainly not been a key issue. It's not been, this is the first pandemic that has been in the United States since nineteen eighteen. And I think certainly, hopefully, it's a different type of situation in the common.
The biggest difference is that it's been declared federally, nationally, as a pandemic versus, of, of course, I see, I totally see your point, you know, you can be very sensitive on other things. The difference with this is, is it's been declared a pandemic, so items like those are more attractive, certainly to help stop the spread, as well as hitting on what you're saying, it's a lot easier for privately owned companies to ban mandates, and then, you know, of course, hire someone who doesn't comply in their corporations. A lot of times we fill out applications to receive your health or insurance if you're a particular non-smoker and the lady just blow her from out of a smoker. So then this is not a new idea. Certain municipalities and private companies have been incentivizing certain things, all related to.